At this time, we're calling it meeting the order for the city council. It's a public hearing on the proposed budget. And first item is item A, consider motion to approve the revenues and expenditure adjustment for the preliminary 2016 budget. Reggie? Or Brian have something first?
Well, I think for the benefit of everybody, this is the second time the, this has been on the agenda, the city council reviewed the preliminary budget. There were some recommendations to make some, some changes which were then done and accomplished and incorporated into the budget. And what you have before you is the, the net result of, of those discussions. The items that were still, I think, up for discussion was that there was some additional information provided in the, in the packet today that deals with the facility manager. We had the New Cat halftime position of roughly $20,000 of cost. And then we also had the concept of whether or not we wanted to pursue a, a newsletter or some sort of communication, extra effort. And I think those, I think those were the three big ones that if I remember correctly that we still had questions on. I do have some information on, on the communications question.
Extra effort.
The building inspector, Mr. Zabel has provided you with some material regarding the building inspection department revenues and what they do as compared to the facility manager type activities. And then if you wanted to answer any questions you might have on the New Ulm Cable TV when we get to that point. So with that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Vorwirken, he can work through his 12-page speedy presentation.
Emphasis on speedy, I take it, so. Anyway, good evening to the city council and others who are watching or listening here live for the 2016 budget public hearing. Basically, I'll be going through a brief overview on the effects of differing items in the budget. I'll also go through a couple of requested changes and also some external requested changes towards the end. Basically, I think all of us wish that we could go back to 1949 and only have a budget of $215,000. But as you know, the things that we do now, I think, have increased significantly and so is our budget. But anyway, this is just a headline from 1949. Next, budget revenues by fund and source. Here's, this is for 2016. You can see the, the source of revenue and broken down by fund. You can see that the sources total 24,000,146,000. Last year was significantly less and I'll explain. Basically, what most of those changes are is we have use of fund balance of $2 million for purchase of land for the armory. We have nine thou- $900,000 in fire equipment purchases, which is, which includes a ladder truck and things like that. So those really make up a lion's share of those large increases. Here you can see the 2015 and you can see that the total is 20,891,000. So compared to that 24 million number, it is a sizable increase in the revenues. But again, a lot of that is, you know, it's not actually increasing property taxes for those two main items because it's use of fund balance. Here you can see the budget revenues by source. Here, the biggest increase was for the use of fund balance. You can see that actually way over here on the left, you can see that large increase. The next largest increase is property taxes. But that in comparison to the fund balance uses is pretty minimal. The rest of them are pretty much status quo. Going on to just a budgeted or 2016 projected revenues by source. Here you can see that the largest percentage of your revenues is property taxes at this time. The next largest is your other sources. And again, that usually is not that large, but because of the use of fund balance for the armory, also use of fund balance of 600,000 park and rec for miscellaneous capital projects and so forth, that has become a significant larger amount than normal. Next would be state LGA.
For the purposes of the audience out there, I think it's an important item just to identify what the percentage rate of the property taxes are compared to the whole operation of the, of the city.
As part of the whole operation, the property taxes makes up 28.6%. State LGA, which is the local government aid, is 17.6%. Your next largest, the other sources that I talked about, is 20.5% for other sources. Again, a lot of that is use of fund balance, so. Then of course, there's some transfers, which many of those are within the debt service funds. And then there's PUC in lieu of taxes, which is 7.8%. Service fees, which is like a charge for service, that would be 7%. And special assessments is 3.6%. Most of that goes into your debt service funds. Here you can see the budget expenditures by fund and also by function. We have it broken down by the major categories of expenditures, personal services, which is your wages and, and all the benefits and so forth. You can see the supplies, other services and charges, capital outlay and transfers out and your debt service and then the sinking fund, so. And this is for 2015 at 20,891,000. If we go on to 2016, you can see that total is 24,147,000. So I've already pointed out some of those differences that caused that, so. So anyway, you can see the, the breakdown by department and by type of expenditure. Here you can see the budget expenditures by function. And you can see that basically your main one there is the capital outlay has the biggest increase. Most of the other increases are pretty much status quo or fairly even, so. But here's the capital outlay right there. 2016 projected expenditures by function. You'll see a further breakdown of general fund and culture and recreation on the next couple of slides, but the general fund makes up 48.1% of our expenditures. Everything in the general fund would be your administration, your building inspections, your streets and sewer, engineering, police and fire, airport cemetery and the community access. So there's a lot of different functions that make that up. Also in the culture and rec, that is the park and recreation and the library. Then of course, the other is actually EDA, character counts and parking districts, so. But the next largest expenditure there is debt service at 27%. And culture and recreation at 17.8% and capital improvements, which is our, our capital improvement fund where we set aside funding to pay for things such as the ladder truck. And also you'll find out later on, the amphitheater for German Park, there's some donations and some matching funds that are going there, so. Here is just a breakdown of the general fund. We break it down with public works at just over 3.2 million or 28%. Public safety, which is your police and fire at three, just over 3.3 million at 28.7%. Your administration, 4.2 million, well, actually almost 4.3 million at 36.9%. Again, that one is much higher than normal and again, it's because of the land purchase for the armory of 2 million that is in there, so.
And, and on that note, we don't know that that's what it's going to cost, but we plug that number in.
Right, that's the budgeted number.
And then just miscellaneous others of 6.4%. The 2016 projected expenditures for culture and recreation. Here you can see the community and recreation centers make up just over 2 million or 47.5%. Culture and recreation, the park system makes up another 1.5 million or 35.5%. And library makes up 732,000 or 17%. Here's just a comparison of 2010 through 2016 budgets. You can see on top the budgeted expenditures, you can see it really not increasing too much until 2016. Then you have all of a sudden it jumping up 3.2 million. But again, if you took off 2 million again for that land plus 900,000, a use of fund balance and the capital improvement funds for the fire equipment, that's 2.9, so it's really about 300,000 actual increase, which I believe would be 2% or a little bit less. The net levy. Also, one thing I should add here, I'm actually excluding the special taxing districts, which is your EDA and your parking district. And I also take out the, the transfers and debt service that has a doubling effect on expenditures. If anybody wants me to explain that, I can, how that works, but. And, but the net levy is going up 318,000 or 4.94% if you just look at the increase due to the levy. If you take a look at the tax capacity rate, however, due to increased tax valuation due to new properties and so forth, it is going up 2.2%. So. I guess as far as the tax capacity rates go, it's, it's a fairly smaller rate, so. And, and then on the bottom of this slide, you can see those increases in the budgeted expenditures there, so. Value of city services, here what we do is we actually take what the average market value of a home in New Ulm is. I, I received this information from Brown County, from the assessor's office. I then figure out what the market value exclusion is, the class rate, the tax capacity rate and so forth, and I figure out what the property tax is on that average house. I do this for five years. And so you can see approximately how much that tax is increasing here for five years there. And for 2015 to 2016, it's approximately $25, so on an average home. Then what we do is we take that average home, we take that tax here of 797,084, I'm sorry, $797.84. And we allocate that out to each department based on their tax levy in that department. And then we get a annual amount and we also break it down by a monthly amount. So if you go to like the fire department up here, you can see that the, the amount that the average homeowner would pay, pay for the fire department is a dollar and nine cents per month or $13.04 per year. You can also go across to your left and see what it was for 2015 and 2014. You know, you can also look at, well, like parks department, $2.74 for, per month or $32.83 per year. So this just kind of gives a, a good idea of what it is per department, so, on property taxes. This is a new schedule I put together. I don't know if this will make sense to everybody or not, but if you don't like it, I won't do it again next year. But one thing that's always kind of concerned me was we had these general revenues, not just property taxes, that get broken out to each department, except for like debt service and library and so forth. This is such stuff as your local government aid and your in lieu of taxes. And sewer department also gets paid up by, or also gets paid for by the public utilities from the waste fire department there. And then the community access actually gets a, you know, a general tax there too on the franchise fee. So what I want to do is just try to show how much all those general type revenues or taxes make up by department. So, so this, so that's kind of what I, what my purpose was on this. And, and then I did it by citizen and by household. And so if you looked at like the police department, you can see that, you know, per person in 2016, all those general revenues that would go towards the police department would be equal to $189 per person. The, but for a household, it's $438 almost. And then I also have a, a breakdown per month and monthly on both of those, so. And so you can just kind of see how that works. Parks department, use them before, you know, it's $22.80 per person or 52.82 per household to be able to use those, that department's or that division's services, so. I, I just thought it would give a little bit more of a, more perspective on all the general revenues that get allocated out and I thought maybe that would be helpful, so. Budgeted historical data, this is simply what the budgets have been since 2001. You can see the inflation rates there also, along with the property taxes and the LGA. This really gets accounted for in this graph here then. What the green bars here are the actual budget that was approved. And the gray bars is that adjusted for, or what it would have been if it would be adjusted for inflation, so you can kind of see the move up and how that would compare if you took into account inflation, so. One thing maybe to point out is that in 2003, the sales tax projects were kind of coming to an end and they were just kind of starting to gear up to, for operations there, so. You know, I think that kind of explains some of the increases in 2004 through 2006 at least, just trying to get all those things straight and get the operations geared up for all those buildings. Next, this is just taxes payable in 2016. You can see the, the price values of the homes that I use this against at the bottom, the 100, 150,000, 225 and 350,000. Just to kind of show you the taxes that those four values would pay between 2015, 2016. So like for a $100,000 home, you can see there was 565 in 2015 and in 2016 it was 577, so I increased it $12 between those two years. Okay, this table is just, is just showing the difference between 2015 and 2016 expenditures in each of those departments. Here now, we are to some of the recommended changes, at least on this first page. One of the things that we found is just a reclassification of equipment within rental. We just found out that there was a, just a miscoding error between engineering and administration. So it's just, basically just a wash between those two departments. And then there was just a misunderstanding as far as how to show certain activity within the park and recreation fund in the preliminary audit. So the second one is just to correct that error, I guess you could call it. And then this third one, you might recall in the last city council meeting, there was an approval of a donation for the German Park Amphitheater. And along with that was a matching request that was then also basically approved, so that is to take into account, basically moving those funds from park and rec over to the 290 fund or capital improvement funds. So it's there matched up and ready to go for that particular project, so. So those first three are basically not really changing anything, but it'd be good if those were made. Also then, you might recall with the preliminary budget, there was a request from Chamber of Commerce to help or to make a contribution towards the city float to fix, to repair that. Basically, they, they've come to us since then and they're asking that we would reconsider including that in the budget. This would, at least at this point, would need to come from fund balance somewhere between a dollar and $10,000, so. I guess this is more of a partnership is correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And then also, last minute, when everything was done, we had this request from the Human Rights Commission last week. This came to me and they're asking for an increase and I handed this out before the meeting for a change of $745 to their budget, so. That is, that is the end and if there's any questions, I'm, we'll certainly try to answer those.
Thank you. Phil, anybody have any comments, concerns, or how do we want to, what do you got in mind, or would you want to go through it by departments or just pick and choose and jump? I've only got a couple items that I need to talk about, but I don't know about anybody else.
I think it's your preference. We have to talk about the float, we got to talk about the inspector.
Communication, extra effort, facilities manager halftime you'll get. If we could do the easy one first, the easiest.
One by one.
All right, I don't know which is first in here. Well, let's just start with one, let's start with the, we're probably backwards, but let's start with the float. Audrey, go ahead.
Hi, thanks, good evening, Audrey Shanahan, President and CEO of the New Ulm Area Chamber of Commerce. Pleasure to, thank you for taking me out of the mess and putting me up early in the game tonight. I hope it's not a late night for you.
It won't be.
It won't be, okay, that's good. Just wanted to clarify quickly right at the beginning that we are not looking to renovate or repair the current float. We've had to retire it because it is not roadworthy anymore. So this, we are looking at a new representation for New Ulm in float form. Kudos to the fire department for adopting and implementing the Miss New Ulm program. We feel like that's in really strong hands and they've used a fire truck when it's been appropriate to take the Miss New Ulm and princesses to area parades, but that does not always work. The fire truck can't always go and so there was, there is a need for a float or transportation of some sort. We think having the princesses and Miss New Ulm in community parades is a good start, but from the chamber's perspective and hopefully partnering with the city that you would agree that New Ulm is a regional center and it's important that we have a presence in some of the surrounding communities, festivals and parades. We are, we do know that many of people from the surrounding communities come to New Ulm. We are the county seat, they come for shopping, they come for healthcare, they come for the amenities that we have here and they also come for just Herman Monument, you know, they come to Turner Hall, things like that. So we really feel like it's important that we be visible in those communities and show our support back to them in their festivals and parades. We are looking for a partnership tonight. We don't know what the final cost is. We've got a great new logo that we think would look great on a float, but we're looking for a partnership with the city. We think we all benefit when we promote New Ulm and these festivals. What we've done so far at the chamber, we've talked about this at a couple of different levels and different committees, and we've started a committee to look into the float as a project itself. It's not just building a float, it's building a program around the float to take into account which parades should we be in, what's the cost to be in those parades, how are we going to take care of mileage, all of that kind of thing. We at the chamber have a committee that's set up to start working on that. But what I would be looking for from the council and from your budget process is simply a commitment of partnership and a financial, just to know that there is some financial resources there to access when we get to that point of creation. Are there any questions?
I guess one, wouldn't it be better to do the process, you just explain and then come to the council? Because right now, we're looking at 1,000 to 10,000, but you aren't saying how many parades you're going to attend or anything else. Our fire department already goes to the area towns and does use.
But not a lot of them. So I agree, it would be better to do the process this way, but I don't control everything at the chamber, so we are, yes, that would be ideal, but I would still like to get this all figured. Um, so we are, yes, that would be ideal, but I would still like to get this all figured out by June, which still puts you in this budget year.
Mr. President, may I? I just wanted to compliment you on the parade of lights. And if anybody didn't see the parade or didn't see the parade lineup, uh, offhand, can you tell me how many neighboring communities had royalty in that parade of lights?
I would bet that we had
Seven, ten?
It's more than I would have guessed, but we can go with seven.
I was, I was completely amazed. And I, I agree with you, of course, that's partly personal, uh, that a float or some presence of the city of New Ulm is needed in those communities because following Richie and trying to do what Richie Wilford did for thirteen or fourteen years, you see the people light up when New Ulm comes by. The, the, no matter what town you're in, when New Ulm came by with the float, they lit up. I have no idea, you know, the response now, and I'm not knocking the, you know, the method of we're getting to some of them. But I agree with you, I think we should be at all of them and it might end up being a, we'll come to your parade if you come to ours. And then instead of exchanging fifty dollar checks or ten dollar checks or whatever they are, we would just do this on a reciprocal type thing.
Mr. President, I sit on the chamber board as a non-voting member and, and I know when this first came up, there was unanimous support by all the people at the chamber meeting that, that a fire truck is awesome, it's great, but it still doesn't represent the city of New Ulm. That we're more than just the fire truck, which is wonderful, but we're just so much more than that. And, and so I, I agree with Audrey, I think that maybe tonight we could see if there's a consensus amongst the counselors to agree to support this and have her bring it back when there's a proposal and we have more information, but not maybe just add it to the budget, but, um, we could take a look at it when it would come back in front of us in June, July, or August, something like that, when, when this, when the chamber's ready, probably sooner than that.
Definitely sooner than that.
Major sooner, okay. Um, I support it, I just think, I don't know if I can give a number tonight, because we don't know what that number would be, but I certainly would support that we could still take it out of our general fund, but not to put it as a separate line item, that's my opinion. I don't know what the other counselors.
Go ahead.
Uh, maybe Audrey can clarify this, uh, maybe for me and the city council and maybe those watching is, is that the thought crosses my mind that the, the, we put together a float, but if the fire department is actually in charge of putting the Miss New Ulm court in the various parades, if they still do their fire truck and still, you know, you, you know, use just like a regular vehicle, uh, I mean, what's the relationship between the chamber and the fire department as it pertains to Miss New Ulm part?
Well, we are committed to having a New Ulm presence in these community festivals and parades. We worked great this past summer, we had the float inspected and we were told this should not go on the road. Okay, so I got princesses and a Miss New Ulm and a fire department that was hoping that they could use it and now they can't. So we did work it out, we found, um, through some of the dealers in town, they would donate a truck and we would make that happen and that worked out just fine. So the relationship there is good. In the future, um, if, I would like to see the design of the float be appropriate and fantastic, whether Miss New Ulm is on there or not. You know, if, if the fire truck wants to take the princesses and Miss New Ulm to a parade, we can ha, we're big enough, we can have two floats in a parade. Um, I just don't want to not be there, I think we're missed if we're not there.
I just have a question, uh, that's, uh, following up more on what Counselor Schultz said. Would it be possible for us to just, uh, uh, look at this, uh, later? Is there enough room in sort of a miscellaneous category to cover this? Uh, so that we, um, have some idea of what we're really looking for, is that possible or not?
I would anticipate that in, in most years, we, uh, have added to our fund balance, so we didn't necessarily always spend everything we had. So if a decision was made at some point in time, that this is something you wanted to do, more than likely, it, it could be absorbed into the, the current budget as it sits. I don't think you'd have to add
All right.
I agree.
Anything to it. Or, or cut something just to do this, I don't think you need to do that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be much more comfortable doing that, uh, than, uh, just saying to the chamber, here's X number of dollars, it might be too little, it might be too much. So, that's how I feel.
Yep, I kind of feel the same way, I feel that we don't have enough information to add anything into the budget, but certainly willing to take a look at it when the time comes.
I'm fine just having the chamber, you know, get their research, get their ducks in a row, come back, present it and maybe challenge them that, you know, maybe we'll do a matching or something, you know, but come up with a, a number. And if Reggie thinks we've got some funds set aside, you know, and we can allocate enough, I'd hate to just throw out a number and be, have a shortfall and then say, gotta come back again.
This is one of the reasons we've got money in all our fund bal, balances. We're not, we're not in a situation where we're razor thin, so. But I'd be a lot more comfortable knowing exactly what it is that we're doing and it is nice to have a counselor on board, you know, so.
Do we have storage for this float then, if we would build one?
Some of the issues to resolve.
See, that's the one that's
I mean, not that we need to build another building or something.
No, we're not doing any of that. So you'll be back to us in April or May, somewhere there.
All right.
Okay.
And from our perspective, that is completely reasonable, we understand, we'll go back, do some more homework. I just don't want it to slide off of your plate so that when I come, you're like, what?
And you're hearing tonight, that's not the case.
Yes, so thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
The next one. Facility manager position?
Sure.
Okay, this is the, this is the important one.
Which ones, well, you got a list?
Let's, let's, let's do some easy ones.
Doing something with the communication.
Okay.
Uh,
We'll go off of your list, I don't know one.
Currently, currently what we've got going is that we've utilized the journal. We contract for about a thousand inches of space every year for advertising and all the legal things that we were required to do. Uh, and then we also do special notices and, you know, things that come up during the year, uh, both, uh, emergency and planned events. Uh, we then, you also utilize KNUJ, uh, more immediate kind of press releases. The mayor does his, uh, fifteen minutes, uh, radio time, uh, on his topics. We utilize utility bills on a monthly basis. Uh, space isn't, you know, a lot of space available, but in some months are full and you just can't, you, you can't, unless you want to pay the extra nineteen cents for the extra ounce or something, we can always put something in there. But we've been trying to use just the base, uh, base postage and, and cram as much stuff in so we don't go over. Uh, we utilize the website, we use Facebook, uh, both Park and Rec and City. Uh, we've got a, uh, a portion of the Citizens, Citizens Bank Reader Board. Uh, it has to be a very short message nonetheless, but we do have some space there. And then obviously we have, uh, you know, a telephone call system, like for snow emergencies where, uh, people, uh, can call in and get information from us. Uh, what we were talking about in the, in the budget was, you know, roughly fourteen thousand dollars for, uh, like a newsletter, whether we did it quarterly or three times a year kind of a thing, to address some of those things that maybe don't get addressed. You know, like, uh, dealing with the, uh, the dog licenses or the, you know, don't feed the deer, you know, ordinance and just bringing things to people's forefront on a seasonal basis. Uh, and then, okay, so that's, that in essence is that one. The only other thing that we do add is, you know, New Cat provides roughly nineteen, twenty boards and commissions video, uh, to the public, uh, gets information out that way. Uh, many people I've bumped into in the community say, you know, that they do watch the city council meetings, they do watch Park and Rec and they do watch the New Cat, uh, to obtain information. So that's, that's another source of information. So, uh, the only thing that we had talked about adding was the newsletter. You know, and, and if the city council is, is, uh, you know, maybe reluctant to go into, into that area, uh, I guess what I would, uh, be doing is focusing and maybe doing more advertising on what is available. Where can you get information and, and maybe our thousand inches of, uh, journal might be a little bit higher than that, uh.
I guess I have a different recollection of the long meeting we had about this. Um, and, you know, the thing that stuck out for me was not, you know, doing the same thing we're doing, but, uh, spending a little, spending a little, uh, one-time money, uh, to try to figure out what message do we want to present. I remember our New Cat, uh, director saying, um, you know, if, uh, figure out what it is that you're gonna say and how best to say it. I mean, I, I, the way I was thinking about it is that, uh, money well spent, if, if we do believe that money needs to be spent with, um, you know, communicating better with, uh, the public, uh, would be, uh, to, uh, involve the services of, uh, uh, specialist, someone who knows what she's doing, uh, to, uh, figure out what is it, what is it that we're trying to say and how best to say it. That's, that's the way I recall our long conversation following up our planning meeting. You know, and not, not, let's do a newsletter, you know. And, and I would see that as more of a, uh, more of a one-time sort of a, uh, consulting, uh, type thing, uh, to see, maybe, maybe we do need to add some money to the budget, maybe we don't need to add some money to the annual budget. But that's the way I, uh, was looking, was looking at it and remembering it.
Okay.
I think I also commented at that time too, that I thought we were gonna try and find out how people wanted to be communicated to through the survey and maybe doing that survey, during that survey, find out how they want to be communicated and then take your money and, and put it into maybe some of that communication. Um, so I don't know if we're ready to put anything in the budget, maybe we do that survey first, find out how we wanna communicate, I don't think
Probably a budget item next year.
Then it would be a budget item.
Well, we've got, we've got fifteen in the budget right now, maybe, you know, for the contract, or contracting with communication specialist to kind of tie, you know, the ideas together.
I mean, I would, I would, I would like to have it there, uh, I mean, maybe, maybe we won't spend it. Maybe, maybe staff won't have time to, to find somebody or locate, uh, somebody. Uh, but I would like to have it there in case we can get it done. It might be something that, uh, comes, that doesn't get done this year, but I'd like to, you know, we'd like to have the possibility of getting it done, I'd like to keep that in the budget.
That just seems awful high, that's a pretty high number for a consultant.
Well, right, and, and it might cost twenty-five hundred, but, uh, if we don't have in the, you know, I, if we're gonna have room to do other things, I'd just as soon have it, have it, have that in the budget.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I can pretty well assure you that if you put the question of how you want to communicate in a survey, there's gonna be a large amount of the younger people. Uh, I think Counselor Schultz and I were both blown away by the number of people that jumped on the Save Target Facebook page. Uh, I'm thinking that a lot of people would like a notice from the city on Facebook. Now, I, I don't know how to do that, I admit, I know how to read it, but, uh,
There was ten thousand people over, what, two days? Ten thousand people in two days.
Yeah, I don't think the news, I don't think a newsletter is, would accomplish what we want.
And I don't know if there is one answer, it's gonna be multi-different issues and based on the population age of our community.
I think it's social media, you know, of some, of some form.
But I know, like, just, you know, when the public utility sends out their thing on streets, that's very popular and well-liked and, I mean, for the people that receive that, but not everybody's on the internet, so.
So maybe we put the money there and maybe not wait for our annual survey, maybe we do something, you know, with the marketing firm.
Specific to that.
Specific just to that and then
Yep.
Use it for that or something.
But like I said, I'd like to see it in the budget and just, more or less as a one-time thing.
We have fourteen thousand in there?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, let's put ten in there.
I'm okay with that, but I'd like to see it, I'd like, I'd like to see us take some action, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on that?
Do we need a motion?
No, because it's already in the budget.
All right.
Okay.
So, are we gonna leave fifteen or are we gonna do ten?
I'm okay with fifteen, but I'm okay with ten.
I'm fine with ten to fifteen, so.
Well, I don't, well, you know, maybe what you could do is, is go through
Yeah, let's
and, and come back and say, once you've been through all the questions, come back and say, yeah, cut this, add that.
Right.
I'll be simpler to do it now. Let's just go ten.
So moved.
Then we don't have to come back.
Let's move it, yep.
All right.
I gotta move it.
We moved it. What we do?
We don't need a motion.
We need a motion.
Do we?
All right.
Consensus, right?
Consensus.
Or do you wanna?
Well, you could instruct
I'll make a motion then for ten thousand.
Why don't you make a motion?
I'll second that.
You got a motion to second for ten? Any more discussion, no in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries, next item, Brian.
Uh, I had the halftime position with New Cat. And as, as Reg pointed out in the budget, that's not a tax-supported item. It's actually new money coming in off of the new franchise agreements that are, uh, currently under construction. We have gotten no pushback from, you know, Comcast on it, other cities do this. Um, but just keeping, keep in mind that Comcast isn't giving us their money, they're, they're just adding forty-five cents
Right.
to everybody's bill and, and in turn paying it, uh, to us. The, the issue here, I think, was just a simple fact that, when New Cat first started, uh, we did, uh, live the two city council meetings, PUC was taped, nobody else was touched. And as I noted before, we got either nineteen or twenty boards and commissions, we taped them all. Uh, because of, I, I think, the idea that, you know, this is, this is the citizens' government, whether it's Park and Rec or, uh, human rights, we, we put it on TV so the citizens at home can see what's going on. And I think that's a, that's a very good thing, but what it does do is it takes three meetings that we used to do and jacks it up to twenty, you know, roughly a month. And so, uh, when, uh, Mr. Martinez, you know, comes to me and says, I've got video that we've taken of X parade or X, uh, city or the water treatment plant or, you know, a project that, that is, uh, very interesting, I think the citizens would be interested in doing. Because of the, the continual monthly stuff, they're not getting to the editing part. They're not taking that raw footage and putting it into a fifteen-minute, this is what your snowplow driver goes through, so when you see snowplows, stay back, you know, and don't crowd them and that kind of thing. So it's more of a educational kind of a thing that, that I'm hoping we can, you know, work on. And so they don't have time to put that into its final format and that's what this halftime person would be doing. And, and quite honestly, that's why we built the forty-five cents into the franchise agreement just for this, so.
It doesn't include tax levy money, so I'm gonna vote to approve that position, um.
I would say. Guess I'd support it too, then we don't have to watch the council meetings of three months ago.
Over and over and over, and we can put it, and we can put it on YouTube or Facebook.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, second.
Any favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries, next.
Next one, uh, the one I've got would be the facilities manager.
And we have this, right?
But let's do, let's get human rights out of the way.
Oh, human rights, yeah, I
I, I, I'll move this, I think we've got, I think the mayor has done a great job, uh, getting a, a human, uh, rights commission that's really active and is doing more in the past year or so than they've done for a while. And, uh, if these folks, uh, want to attend the Minnesota annual, Minnesota Human Rights Annual Symposiums and those sorts of things, I, I think that's just wonderful. So I'll, I'll move that we increase their budget by seven hundred and forty-five dollars as requested.
I'll second.
No favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries, facility manager, or you have another one?
Yep, that's the one.
This is the one, this is the big one.
You got the materials that were included in your, in your, uh, agenda packet, uh, that, uh, Mr. Zabel had, has put together. Uh, you note that, you know, New Ulm inspections, uh, take approximately seventy percent of the time. You know, the numbers are quite, uh, dramatic, you know, a hundred, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-two inspections as of October eighth, so we're more than likely gonna go over the two thousand mark, uh, before the end of the year. Cortland does about ten percent of the time and other department activities are approximately twenty percent of the time. And, uh, the other twenty percent of the time that, that we have listed here, obviously, it's like zoning and And, uh, the other twenty percent of the time that, that we have listed here, obviously, it's like zoning and, and variance, heritage preservation, emergency management, civil defense, uh, custodial staff, complaint calls, et cetera, working with the EDA. You know, it's roughly two Z's, fours and one percent, but it, when you add up all the extra time that the, uh, building official spends on this stuff, it, it eats up, uh, a little bit of time. Roughly twenty percent. Uh, you'll notice that the, uh, he's got a report of the permits issued by the month, um, for twelve, thirteen and twenty-fourteen, uh, separated out by residential, commercial, garages, et cetera. You got the October of twenty-fifteen. Then there's a, then there's a map that reflects the, all of the facilities that, you know, basically deal with all the buildings, all the structures and, you know, anything that, that, uh, ultimately comes across, uh, his deck, his desk, uh, maybe not every year, but it's, it comes up. Uh, there's quite a few locations throughout the, throughout the city. Um, many are in, in the Park and Rec, uh, facilities, you know, all the way from the trap range, you know, to every one of the ball diamonds, every one of the small parks has some, you know, some sort of little structure there. Uh, obviously, some of these things can be done, you know, you look at it and say, it needs a new roof, you know, uh, and it doesn't cost, you know, but four hundred, five hundred bucks. The other things that are more concerning, uh, and much more, uh, emergency-oriented is, is when you come up on a, you know, a roof you didn't plan on replacing and it, and it costs you three hundred thousand, that kinda stuff. So the little, the little buildings and, and stuff like that, I'm not really too concerned about because as talked about in prior discussions, you know, I think we've got staff, you know, on, on board that can see an asphalt roof on a small building and say, pfft, you know, we need to put that in the budget. It's, uh, it's the more bigger stuff, the, the tuck pointing, the, the roofs, the parapets, the HVACs, uh, the, the whole discussion of, of, you know, efficiencies and what you can, you know, you can pay for a product, uh, by lower, uh, utility bills, uh, over a period of time. And, you know, when you, when you, when the person in charge of doing this stuff is, is doing eighty percent of all the other stuff that's, that's in their job, it's, uh, kinda hard to specialize in these types of things. So you got the report that, uh, Mr. Zabel put together. Uh, hopefully you have time to kinda review all of the things that are there. It has, uh, the total city has roughly, uh, forty-four million dollars worth of facilities. So it's not, uh, it's not one building, it's not one courthouse, it's not one hospital. Our stuff is spread out from one end of town to the other and, and, uh, when you add it all up, it's a, it's a pretty large chunk of, chunk of change that sometimes doesn't always get the attention it probably, you know, deserves. And that's the whole, uh, point behind, uh, getting, uh, somebody to concentrate on that specifically. Now, the utilities, on the other hand, uh, you know, they've roughly got fifty-two million dollars worth of facilities. Many of those departments, uh, I think are saying, well, we'll, you know, kinda continue to keep doing our own thing. But there are a few departments that would say, I, I would rather special, have a specialist come look at my roof myself. I, I don't, I don't know much about roofs. I may know a lot about water, but I don't know a lot about rubber roofs. And so, uh, each department is a little bit different than the PUC. So there, there could be some, some tasks done by, uh, by this person in the PUC and, and there was some interest and we just, you know, haven't gotten all the way to the end because the position needs to be, uh, further discussed. So, uh, with that, I guess we can open it up, uh, to any questions you might have after looking at all the information. And, and, oh, Mr. Zabel's here. If you got any questions for him in particular, I'm sure he'd be more than willing to, uh, help answer.
Mr. President, remind me that half the position, we're just simply replacing, um, a building inspector position that was already there. So really, we're only talking about adding a halftime facilities manager. Along with that, of course, comes full-time benefits. We understand that. Um, I mentioned last time, I support this position. I think this makes sense. Um, when you have a building and, um, facilities manager that has gotta keep track of forty-four million dollars worth of property and can literally, when they're in charge and they know that the roof on the Civic Center is bad and it's got two years left to go, and if we don't have the facility inspector and nobody's up there really checking out, one bad leak can, can cost us so much damage and, um, and then plus, I think when you have a facilities manager that knows who, that X company is the one that has the best prices on fixing a small roof repair and, and then they know that X place has got the best electrical prices to fix a generator. It makes sense to me. I approve this. I, I think we need to move on this this year.
And I, and I'm, I'm in favor of this too, and I won't repeat the things that Counselor Schultz said, but, you know, just as the person who's been here the longest, um, I just look at this other, twenty percent of other department activities. Um, all the things that in the fifteen years I've been here have been added to this staff. We didn't, we didn't used to have a heritage, uh, preservation, uh, commission. We didn't used to have a fence ordinance. We didn't, you know, there's also, you know, we didn't used to, there's, there's a lot, you know, we didn't ha, used to have-
Chickens.
Chickens, you know, we, that we, we really, and I shouldn't, when I say we, I don't, I'm not talking about the council. I mean, everything that we do is because the citizens of New Ulm expect things to go right and they ask us to do things. And there's just work, uh, work, uh, that gets, uh, moved over to this department. And I think they're overloaded and that, that, I'm adding that to your comments.
You know, since we're going around the table, I guess I don't support it. I really don't believe we looked into it enough, studied it enough, spent enough time on it. I'm not against the facility manager. I think we don't need it underneath the building inspector position. I think we needed a person all by himself and in charge of all the facilities, and I mean, uh, custodians, everything. Make him a department head-type person who's responsible and go that way. But until we do that, I'd support a part-time inspector just to make sure we get that done. But I will not support this one.
I've got a little mixed emotions, you know. I'd, I'd hate to see our buildings go to pot, you know. I'd like to protect our investments. We put a lot of money into them, you know, we're talking about putting more money into them here with the potential future sales tax referendum. And, but yet, we have contract services available, you know, and that's what we've been using right now from, you know, having our roofs checked and things like that. And it's gonna be, and I don't know, I kinda agree with Charlie. Does it fall under the building inspection, you know? It could, we could possibly add one, add somebody there and create a new position, you know, maybe with, behead of all the maintenance for all of our, you know, buildings together and have them oversee something on that aspect.
I have some of the same reservations. I think, um, I think if we're gonna look at a, um, a building, a person to be in charge of all of our buildings, that, a facilities manager, you would look at that position and then you would have your custodial staff under them. They would be in charge of, of then all of the buildings and maintaining them. And I'm afraid that if you put it into a halftime position, we're not gonna be serving our buildings as well as we would want them served. Um, I'm in favor of the halftime inspector position to get that filled up and back to where it was so that they can, um, continue, you know, working full-staffed. But I really think that we need to look at the, this position further as more of a full-time position if we go down that road or if we stay with the contracted.
I have a question. Um, we're working on what I would refer to as the Hays Study. Uh, do we know when that is going to be completed?
We were just told by the firm doing the work that they had hoped to meet the deadline, which was the end of the year.
Oh.
They haven't actually probably progressed as fast as we had hoped, so I don't know if the end of the year is achievable. But it is, uh, that's the goal. Get it done by the end of the year.
Well, 'cause that was one of the things that, uh, that I, uh, was thinking about too, is, uh, uh, I, like, we won't know until we see the Hays Study, uh, if there's some adjustments that, that need to be made as far as, um, you know, allocation of, uh, various responsibilities. I mean, I'm willing to wait on this, but, uh, I sort of feel like order in the flow, that I, I don't want this, I don't want this to fall off our radar, uh, just because we, uh, just because we, uh, don't all, uh, agree. I, I really think that overall, we, we, we need somebody to be in charge of these buildings. Um, I, I'm not crawling up on any roofs, uh, and, uh-
Well, we don't want hunks of our library falling off again like we did a few years ago.
No, no, that was a disaster. Uh, and, you know, um, so I'm sensing that, uh, we're, this is something that we're gonna probably be looking at next year.
I think, I think that the Personnel Committee should take a really good look and, and see exactly what other communities are doing and really get an understanding of how we would want that structured within our organization. Just to throw it in as a halftime position, I just don't know if it's doing it justice.
I, I just, I, I would just wanna, y- you know, you, you mentioned something about shifting, uh, custodial staff over to a facilities manager. You wanna talk about that a little bit more? I'm not sure I-
Well, I think, I think when you look at other businesses or structures, a lot of times that custodial staff will fall under that facility manager because that's basically what that custodial staff will do too, you know. They're, they're keeping that building running and functioning and, and taking care of some of that repair work. So then they would report to that facilities manager, so.
Counties run that way. That's how the county-
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
They would kinda do the, maybe the homework or, you know, preliminary and, or the heads-up and say, you know, I think we're gonna need some attention here and-
Right.
Address it to the facilities manager to-
Right, and, uh, well, and of course, uh, you know, one of the big departments is, uh, is Park and Rec.
Yeah.
Um, and so the shift, that, I just saw that I make sure I understand your position. The shift would be, uh, that all the custodial staff would be under the facilities manager. It's, it's just a proposal.
Right, just, I mean, just, that's one thing that we'd have to look at. I mean, I just think that that's some, something that you would wanna consider when you're, when you're developing a position like that, so that it, yeah.
Yeah, in the county system, they work under the, um, facilities manager, but they still work with each department head as to-
Right.
Yeah.
Direction of what needs to be taken care of and what doesn't and how often and-
Just as long as they get the communication out and network, you know, because not every department head's gonna be wanting to go up on a roof. You know, and I don't think everybody's qualified in that aspect, you know.
Right, and then that falls to the building inspector.
Correct.
And, and like I said, they've been, they've had all, uh, all sorts of other responsibilities.
They've adapted over the years and took on more and more, but, you know, let's keep them in the inspection area and create one, one position.
Well, reluctantly, if that's who we're going, then I think we still would wanna approve the halftime-
Yeah.
Um, inspector position. Do we have an, uh, estimate price on that?
Probably forty. Maybe, maybe a little bit more, forty-five at the most. I mean, I mean, I'm trying to include ben, you know, any benefits that they might get too.
Right, right.
Right.
We, um, uh, President Schmitz and counselors, uh, to add in a part-time building inspector, I'm assuming this is halftime, we have estimated it, uh, twenty-seven thousand nine sixty-one. So about twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Is what we have estimated for that. Yeah, there's, if-
Limited benefits.
At halftime, there'd be, it's pretty limited on the benefits, so.
But you don't know if you're gonna bring somebody in with experience or not, so you're not sure where they're gonna be on that salary scale.
I'd rather be on the high end than the low end, you know.
I'll push forth a motion then for thirty-five thousand to put in that account.
You know, the other way we can look at it, we can try it for two thousand sixteen. If we feel we need a full-time person there in twenty-seventeen, we can, we can bring it up, you know, but if we don't start somewhere, we're not gaining anything.
Right. And they're still short that position, so.
Yeah.
Right. So thirty-five?
I'll put thirty-five, I'll just, uh-
Okay. Uh, Cede.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Counselors, can I just clarify this a little bit? We're taking out the full-time, but adding in part-time, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Right. So, do the man-
So this would make it, so if you, if you decided to change your mind and, and go with a full-time facilities manager in twenty-sixteen, the funding's not gonna be there.
Right.
We probably would look at that for twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, I think we just lead to twenty-seventeen. I think we need to spend the next twelve months looking at-
Right.
Other utilities, cities, whatever it is that have facility managers, just as Les made the comment with the county, they don't have near the buildings we do. They have a facility manager, but he does a lot more to just look at that building. So I think we need to come up with a job description that spells out exactly what that person's gonna do and go prepare. So I don't see that taking place in two thousand sixteen.
Well, and like I said, I think, well, I think the Hays Study might give us some, uh, some focus and direction in that regard. Hope so. Hope so.
So there's a motion, but no second?
Wait, you were thirty or thirty-five?
I said thirty-five, just for the cushion.
Yes, I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second for thirty-five thousand. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, no, motion carries. Well, I believe that covers all the items, Brian. So we do have a-
It does.
I don't know if we need to know the number right now, but it'd probably lower a little bit more than the four-point-eight.
Oh.
Uh, should I explain it or?
Go for it.
Well, yeah, one more thing, okay.
Oh.
We need to, uh, do a correction.
Okay.
Uh, an error was found in the, uh, street department's regular salaries and overtime.
Oh, no.
Uh, there was a twenty thousand dollar short in the overtime area. And, of course, we base the regular wages on how many people are currently here. And so there's like a miscoding. They're putting their overtime into regular hours kind of a thing. So even though it shows, it, in the bottom line, it shows the total is, is probably correct. Uh, when we did the budget, overtime was twenty thousand short. And so in order, if we have a normal year, we actually need to put back in twenty thousand in that overtime line item, which by removing the full-time facility manager, that frees up twenty thousand dollars to do that. That could freeze up more than that, but, but it frees up, uh, enough to make that line item correct. So motion to-
So moved.
Correct that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, no, motion carries. So you couldn't pick that extra up, Kurt, huh?
Did, did we need to have, uh, maybe the, uh, council president vocalize anybody present here from the public, so we can kinda go on record? This is a public hearing.
Anybody like to say anything? We kept you long enough, nothing to say, huh?
Or do you wanna go home?
We have to have motion to close the public hearing?
Idris spoke, so, yeah.
So?
Yeah, we need a motion to close the hearing. I'll move it.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. No more business. adjourned.